Good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, September 18th, 2005. This is the regular meeting of the Ranch Mirage City Council and Community Services District, Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Boards. I would like to ask you now to join me in a flag salute to our magnificent country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs?
I’m here.
Councilmember Fromberg-Ettlestein?
Here.
Councilmember O’Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protam-Molado?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here.
We will now have councilmember comments, and I will start on my right this time and ask Councilmember Downs to lead us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is National Constitution Week. National Constitution Week is an annual week-long observance commemorating the signing of the U.S. Constitution in 1787. Starting on September 17th yesterday and ending on September 23rd, the purpose is to commemorate the signing of the U.S. Constitution on September 17th of 1787. Congress established this week-long event in 1956 to promote understanding and appreciation of the U.S. Constitution, its ideals and the principles of citizenship. Some of the principles established in the Constitution are the creation of three co-equal branches of government, the establishment of a bicameral legislature, a House, and a Senate, the creation of the Electoral College to elect a president. Our founders argued, sometimes spirited arguments, over these and many other issues, but in the end, they found a way to behave rationally and in the spirit of compromise, and they drafted a constitution that has stood the test of time. In doing so, they taught us a lesson, the lesson that it’s okay to disagree, it’s okay to have vigorous debate, but in the end, let’s work together progressively in the spirit of civility, respect, and compromise, so that we can create that more perfect union. It’s a lesson that’s important for all of us to focus on today. In our country today, we live in a time of intense division. I think that if the constitutional founders were here to advise us today, they would suggest that we moderate our rhetoric, that we be more respectful of the opinions of others, that we look to our better angels, that we be firm in our convictions, but define better and more civil ways to disagree. Now, the second issue that I want to speak to today is to again refer to the important work that this council has done in recent years to make our city even more safe. In recent years, this council has increased the ratio of sheriff’s deputies to just over two per 1,000 Ranch Mirage residents versus the Riverside County average of 1.15 per thousand, and the property crime rate has been dramatically reduced in our city. I have spoken and written about the statistics showing the reduction in the crime rate, but at a recent council meeting, one of our good citizens spoke during non-agenda public comment and suggested that the next time he sees me, he would educate me on statistics. Now, I appreciate this Ranch Mirage resident regularly speaking to us about law enforcement. I encourage him to continue to do so. I think it’s an important focus for all of us, and I appreciate his focus on this issue. But his comment does remind me of some fun quotes about statistics that I’ll share with you. The first is this: “There are lies, there are black lies, and then there are statistics.” The second one that I like goes like this: “75% of all statistics are made up on the spot.” And the last quote that I like comes from Sir Winston Churchill, who reportedly once said, “The only statistics that you can truly trust are the ones you have falsified yourself.” Now, I share these quotes not because they are right or wrong, I share them because they’re just plain good fun. What I want to do is to share with Ranch Mirage residents once again the statistics about crime reduction in the city of Ranch Mirage. The statistics were compiled, checked, and calculated by city staff. A special thanks to Tyler Folks, who did the legwork in doing the calculations. And where’s the report? I brought the report with me. It’s a big, long report that shows all of the calculations on the crime rate in the city of Ranch Mirage. Now, in preparing the report, it contains a batch of charts and graphs. The bottom line of the report is this: property crime in Ranch Mirage was down 13% 2022 versus 2021, down 15% 2023 versus 2022, and down 27% 2024 versus 2023, down a very significant 39% in the first five months of 2025 versus 2024. Now, those statistics are the facts and nothing but the facts. So thank you again to city staff for collecting, collating, and calculating these numbers, and a great big thank you to Tyler, to Lieutenant Chris Turnus, who leads our Ranch Mirage law enforcement team, to Community Service Officer Al Benetius, and some of the other members of the law enforcement team who are here in the chamber with us today. Thank you for keeping our city safe. Now, the last item that I want to speak to today involves that same resident who spoke about schooling me on law enforcement statistics, and it also involves the first item that I spoke about regarding National Constitution Week and the importance of civility and respect in our public discourse. At the last council meeting, that same speaker was critical of Eisenhower in his non-agenda public comments. I have no problem with that. He’s welcome to his opinion. He is welcome to state his opinions at this podium in this chamber. Now, while I don’t share his opinions about Eisenhower, I defend his right to speak. What I do take issue with is the unmannerly way in which he mispronounced the name of the Eisenhower CEO, and then carelessly said, “If I don’t pronounce it right, frankly, I don’t care.” That’s what he said. He said at this podium in this chamber, “If I don’t pronounce it right, frankly, I don’t care.” Well, I do care. The name of the president and chief executive officer of Eisenhower Health is Martin, Marty, Marty Masiello. Eisenhower is consistently rated as one of the best hospitals in the state, and Marty’s leadership is an important reason for Eisenhower’s success. Eisenhower Health is the largest employer in our city. It is very important to the health and well-being of the residents of Ranch Mirage. It is also very important to the economic well-being of our city. It’s unfortunate that Marty was referred to in an impolite way from this podium in this chamber. As I suggested in my earlier comments about National Constitution Week, the constitutional founders, if they were here to advise us today, I think they would ask us to behave in a more civil and respectful way. And so, to that good neighbor, please, continue to let us know your thoughts. Please, continue to be an involved citizen. But please, let’s find a more respectful way to address those who lead us in this community, and let’s find a better way to disagree. So thank you to Lieutenant Chris Turnus and his team of deputies who keep Ranch Mirage safe, and thank you to Marty Masiello and his Eisenhower team who keep this city healthy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Downs. Those are very, very appropriate words, certainly at this time in our city and in our country. I hope everybody who you addressed heard them and will take them to heart, well-spoken and well-expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protam-Molado?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon to all that are here today. Often is the case, the city and the city council receive numerous compliments and comments about our streets and thoroughfares in Ranch Mirage, how smooth the ride is, how nice the streets are that are absent of potholes, and it’s easier on the car. It doesn’t happen on its own, and certainly we all know this week, Highway 111 has had a slight interruption with a slurry project to keep those streets in the wonderful condition that they are all year round. Is it an inconvenience, maybe in the grand scheme? No, but it does cause a little bump in the day, but given the grand scale of the project, I think we’re all traversing Highway 111 in a most expeditious manner. And I want to thank the staff, contractors, the sheriff’s deputies who provided some additional traffic assistance, but most importantly, to the businesses and the residents, not only of Ranch Mirage, but across the valley, for your patience and understanding. We take our roads very, very seriously, the condition of those roads, it affects you as residents and those that own businesses, and we apologize for this small inconvenience, but we appreciate your understanding. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. A small price to pay for what we consider outstanding roads. There is no question that our Public Works Department does an incredible job. Thank you for the effort, without a doubt. Councilmember Eve Fromberg-Ettlestein, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two comments today. First is I attended the SEVAG Public Safety Committee meeting last Monday, and it was really a wonderful meeting because our city got an incredibly great compliment from the SEVAG Traffic Team on the smooth transition for CV Sync with our city, the move into our work yard in Thousand Palms, and the continued work on the improvement and upgrade of equipment for the CV Sync project. And we got a lot of shout-outs and raised hands, so that was really nice, and I just wanted to share that with city staff. The second item is we spent this week in a lot of library commission meetings, the last two weeks, and I really wanted to pay my compliments to not only all of our commissions for the library, which is Cultural Foundation and the Oversight Committee, but I also wanted to thank the library staff and their time in what looks to be an incredible program for the 2025-26 season at our library, for our community, and I would encourage all residents to continue to check the library website for those program updates and program dates and attend. A lot of energy, time, thought, and creativity goes into creating that programming for the benefit of our citizens, and it is definitely worth checking out, as is our library, which I was asked a question by somebody at a luncheon this summer, which is, where is our cooling center? And our library is our cooling center and is open on the weekends, unlike a lot of other cooling centers in other cities, so I just wanted to make that aware, even though it feels like the heat might be over. You know, we always get a surprise heat wave right before the end of October, so please feel free to use the library as a cooling center if it makes it easier for you to get through a day of triple-digit temperatures. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O’Keefe, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Many years ago, I met Wallace Annenberg. She was a great person, and as you know, she passed away in July, and there have been many accolades about her generosity and her philanthropy. Mayor Wile eloquently acknowledged her contributions to our city through her work at the Annenberg Foundation and at Sunnylands. So she was involved in many philanthropic efforts, but there are two that I would like to mention because they were important to me personally. First, during the AIDS epidemic, for those of us who lived through it and were personally impacted by it, it was a difficult and scary time. I was managing large department stores with hundreds of employees, and we lost many of them to this terrible disease. Three of my closest friends died. I lost my partner of 14 years. In many ways, it felt hopeless for many of us, but that’s where Wallace Annenberg comes into the story. When no one else was helping, including the government, Ms. Annenberg agreed to chair events, raise awareness, and raise money at that time, the fledgling AIDS project in Los Angeles. She called her friends, including First Lady Betty Ford, Elizabeth Taylor, Joan Rivers, to help to begin a raise awareness and money to fight this disease. So that was the beginning. Now, some 40-plus years later, we have extraordinary organizations like DAP Health, where my colleague, Councilmember Fromberg-Ettlestein, is chair of the board, does a fantastic job, helps thousands of people. We have LGBT Center in the valley, and right here in Ranch Mirage, we have Eisenhower Health, fighting infectious diseases. This is the result of the efforts of folks like Wallace Annenberg, and I will never forget that, and I will always be grateful. Second, Ms. Annenberg was a fierce champion of animal welfare. She supported many organizations to help folks with pets and to protect wildlife, and even now, as we speak, construction is going on with the Wallace Annenberg Wildlife Crossing, which is the world’s largest urban wildlife crossing, which will stretch across 10 lanes of the 101 freeway in Agoura Hills when it’s completed. It will help animals such as mountain lions, deer, and bobcats pass safely over the freeway. So I’m happy to announce that here in Coachella Valley, we can continue the work exemplified by Ms. Annenberg. Greater Palm Springs Animal Allies has opened the Desert Wildlife Center in Indio. It’s in Indio, but it’s for the whole valley, including us. Councilmember Downs and I toured it when it was just getting started months ago, and I went back this last week for my third time. It’s a beautiful facility now. It’s a hospital that will serve as safe refuge for sick, injured, and orphaned wildlife. They need medical treatment, they need rehabilitation. So the center is dedicated to cultivating and sustaining peaceful coexistence between humans and wildlife, and folks, Riverside County is the fastest-growing county in California, so it’s important that we protect our habitat, our environment, and our wildlife. I have a feeling that Ms. Annenberg would be pleased. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Very nice. And what you have mentioned is another person that has contributed so, so much to our valley here, and we lost someone in the last two weeks, likewise, who was a major philanthropist. And I would like to honor Harold Matzner. Harold was a good friend, a major, major philanthropist, responsible for things such as the International Film Festival, the Macallum Theater, and the Palm Springs Art Museum. His charity had no limits, and he just did a fabulous job. He steered all of these things in a most practical, unassuming way, and yet he was a guiding light. And like Wallace, these are people that we will never forget. They made such an incredible impression in our city, and in fact, irreplaceable contribution. So to you, Harold, we wish you Godspeed. Thank you for everything that you’ve done, and your contributions will never be forgotten. With that, I would like to transition to our city manager, who will make any appropriate comments. If not, then he will transition into the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments today. The members of the council have three items on the consent calendar for their consideration. Item 4A is the September 4th, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Item 4B are contracts, and item 4C are the demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, I’ll ask the city clerk to take public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? No speakers.
Are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar? If there are none, I’ll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. There’s a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now go to the action calendar, and item 5A, which is the annexation number 201 to Community Facilities District Number 1, and that will be presented by Kofi Antabom, our Director of Administrative Services. Kofi, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. So this item is the first step in the city’s annexation process for developments within the city’s jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the November 6th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located approximately 2,000 feet south of Frank Sinatra Drive on the west side of Vista del Sol. It is comprised of one parcel totaling approximately 5.05 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide the parcel into four single-family residential lots. Tentative parcel map 38492 was originally approved by the Planning Commission on December 12, 2024, with a condition of approval number 14 to annex the territory into Community Facility District Number 1. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD-1 and provide for an expedited approval of the annexation and levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map, and direct the city clerk to record the map and establish the date and time of the public hearing for the annexation. That concludes my presentation. I’ll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding 5A? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding item 5A? If not, I’ll entertain a motion, please.
I’d be happy to make the motion. Adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, declaring the city’s intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number 1 and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of special tax for annexation number 201. I’ll second.
There’s a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The second item on the action calendar is 5B, and it has to do with the Ranch Mirage Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission membership, and this will be presented by Kristy Ramos, our city clerk. If you would, Kristy.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. As you are aware, a combination of vacant positions and a lack of attendance have led to numerous Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission meetings being canceled or adjourned. Because of this, the commission has been unable to conduct the business with which it is tasked. It is important to have a complete and operational commission so that business may proceed. Two vacancies currently exist on the commission, and several applications were received. The applications were forwarded to the two councilmembers with vacancies to fill, who then submitted their nominations to me. Including the new nominations, the proposed new makeup of the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission is as follows. Mayor Wile’s appointee is Wallace Hill. Mayor Protam-Molado’s appointee is Stuart Clyde. Councilmember Downs’s appointee is Marlene Cassetta. Councilmember Fromberg-Ettlestein’s appointee is Kathy Miller. Councilmember O’Keefe’s appointee is Mike Renner. The at-large, non-voting mobile home owner appointee is Kenneth Easley, and the at-large, non-voting park owner-operator-manager nominee, our appointee, is Stanton Markowitz. If approved as presented, this slate of commission members will serve through the remainder of the current term, which runs through the end of May 2026. To approve this proposed slate, the council may move to approve the slate of Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission members as stated by the city clerk. That completes my report, and I can take public comment. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission? My only comment is that we appreciate anybody that will volunteer for any of our commissions. It is most appreciated. It’s a responsibility that must be fulfilled, and we’re delighted to be able to make these nominations today. Are there any other council comments? If none, I’ll entertain a motion.
I’ll do the motion. So a move to approve the slate of commissioners to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission as read by the city clerk.
I’ll second.
There’s a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to non-agenda public comments, and city clerk, if you would, call anybody that has submitted an application.
First speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
I have to say before I begin that Ranch Mirage City Council put me into this incredibly unwelcome position. I don’t like to say anything negative about anyone at all. That’s my total focus in life, is to be positive. Unfortunately, I’ve been through some problems here. Okay, I suffer due to long-term intentional elder abuse and fraud by the Ranch Mirage City Council. This illegal fiasco resulted from decisions made by individuals with mental illness. These individuals were on the Housing Board, Housing Authority Board, and on city staff. Mental illness is the reason for all the city’s reckless crimes against me. I will explain by giving testimony about Mr. Hagerman’s continual criminal behavior toward me since 2019. I call it Hagerman’s hogwash. It’s a bunch of slander based on hearsay only. For me, the worst thing about the city’s crimes is the main perpetrator, Mr. Hagerman. His disrespectful murder in slow motion has been brutal, long-term, extreme elder abuse against me. Stress kills. Unfortunately, for years, every morning I wake up, and the wicked Mr. Hagerman is the first frightening thing on my totally traumatized mind. Mr. Hagerman’s relentless and wanton victimization of me—wanton, I love that word. I like words. Wanton victimization of me has been horrifying, heartbreaking, demeaning, frustrating, shocking, and repulsive. My case proves Mr. Hagerman is not qualified to be in charge of the welfare of vulnerable human beings. In December 2024, I watched an online video by Mr. Hagerman. Watching his testimonial was an astonishing revelation for me. I thought, wow, here’s that ruthless fraud who has intentionally abused me since 2019, and he’s talking about his life and employment experience. Wow. I was shocked. Mr. Hagerman testified that he had suffered from extreme anxiety, panic attacks, and suicidal thoughts, all while he was on the job here. In conclusion, the city council’s decision to illegally evict me was made by Richard Kite, who had obvious dementia, along with Mr. Hagerman, the right-hand man who was also suffering from mental illness. I bore the brunt of all this inhumane mental illness on the city council. I plan to go to the next Women’s Club meeting, which is next week, and fortunately, they’re having a talk by that lovely Holly, who is the senior Miss America or California, I guess. I met her here, we hit it off immediately, we both went to UCSB together.
Can I conclude your comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Pardon? Pardon? I’m sorry. Did you say something else? I’m sorry. Next speaker is Patrick Lowry.
Patrick Lowry, 21-year resident of Ranch Mirage. Love those kinds of comments. I’ll debate you any day, and I’ll introduce you to Aaron Burr, tell you a bit more about our past history. Next is the Loftus versus Eisenhower. Next is the Loftus versus Eisenhower. Read it. Then you tell me what you come up with when you think about Eisenhower. Jesus Christ does not live at Eisenhower. If you don't remain diligent, don't practice good, good, honest criticism, you don't get the best results. Let me talk about crime, and let me correct quotes. It's liars, damned liars, and statisticians. I slashed that and put in politicians. The next best one, and I really direct this toward Mr. Downs. A drunk uses a lamppost not for enlightenment, as with a politician, but for support. You've got to be careful when you use statistics. Crime is here. You can tell me all day long that we have 30 people who are in the sheriff's department, and I will tell you, get them on the street. That's what I'll tell you. Get them on the street. Look on the weekends and see if you see a patrol car. So I don't question their commitment. I don't question their honor. None of that. Now, I'm going to stay here, forgive me, because this really annoys me, because I have no way to really go at you. Love to do it. Love to do it, because you're way off the mark. Your job is to be critical, to look at things deeply, honestly, fairly. That's how you make a great city. I get fed up with hearing people say, this is a wonderful city. It's so beautiful. No, you, that's what we want it to be. That's what we need it to be, and we deserve it to be. The safest city in California right now, well, it goes back and forth, is Imperial. Do you know Imperial? Yeah, safest city. You look at the index of crime, we lag far behind. Now, let's talk about baseball. Baseball hit, batter hits 190. What's the average baseball player hit? 240, 245? Let's think about crime. So we took 190 and moved it to 200. Getting anything accomplished in 200, we've got a long way to go to get to 240. So we're marching towards success in controlling crime. We're not there. Okay, I have no other way to look at you guys and talk any differently. Okay, look critically at things. Look at Loftus versus Eisenhower. Think that Newsweek rated Eisenhower 39th in the state. Why? Why? I mean, do these people look at hospitals so differently that we can't trust either scores? All right, anyway, I don't want to continue with this. Love this city. I compliment you people for what you do. I don't know how you do it. Maybe putting up with me is very difficult. Don't want it to be.
Kylie, conclude your comments.
Thank you again for your time. Anytime you want me to introduce you to American history, I'm here to do it.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, everybody. The word for today is demeaning. To take a good picture of our country, of our magnificent country, just look at DC. Just look at Trump, Bondi, Cash, Vincent, all of them. I don't see any, excuse me, I don't see any respect. I don't see any Americanism. I want to thank Patrick for his talk. I don't think much of Eisenhower health, what do they call it? Mental health or whatever. I've been there a couple, three times. I don't like him. Period. My mother, whenever election time came around, she would say, "Ya los train de la cola." And you all that don't speak Spanish like I do, I'm from Brownsville, Texas. We speak English and Spanish. In case you don't know, that's where the Mexican-American War of 1848 started. Excuse me, started. I graduated high school in 1963. My mom also had to pay a poll tax, which most of the time she couldn't afford. So she couldn't vote. So again, Patrick, and I'm a lot like Patrick, even though we don't communicate very well together. I don't like this self-patting of each other up here in the days of how great I am and what I do. I don't care, you know, if we're all millionaires and we give for this, if we give for that, good. But I don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear that, oh, thank you for our sheriffs, sheriffs. That's our job. Don't be constantly patting everybody on the back.
Please conclude your comments.
Thank you very well.
The next speaker is Ricardo Loretta.
Good afternoon. I'd like to read a short letter that I will then leave with the city clerk to document my remarks. So I'm honored to present you a sponsorship opportunity, which I hope you will embrace and support. I'm Ricardo Loretta, a past district governor and the current finance chair for Rotary District 5330, which encompasses all of Riverside County and half of San Bernardino County, covering 60 Rotary Clubs, 15 of which are in the Coachella Valley. On November 15th, we're hosting a gala Rotary Means Business fundraiser at Omni Las Palmas in Rancho Mirage, an event which will draw 250 to 300 attendees. The interesting thing is that a key mission for this event is to raise funds for a first-ever Camp Biz project, which will be held in the spring of 2026. This is a two-night, three-day, first-ever training for 40 or so 11th-grade students in matters relating to business. It's a concept which fellow Rotarians in San Diego have run successfully for years. They call their project Camp Enterprise, and we're lucky that one of the organizers of the event in San Diego now lives in Coachella Valley and is going to be helping us. In addition to participating in a business challenge, where teams develop a business concept and craft a business plan, including product design, marketing strategy, financial projections, and an organizational structure, the students participate in interactive workshops and guest speaker sessions, and it culminates with a Shark Tank-type competition before a panel of judges composed of local business leaders and Rotarians, people like you. So beyond the competition, students gain real-world exposure to entrepreneurship and leadership and an appreciation for many of the core values that we stand for. Beyond the, I'm sorry, the cost of a camp like this, including housing, meals, materials, transportation, and other costs, is about $500 a student. And so if this event is successful, we hope it'll generate a surplus that will not only fund Camp Biz, but also permit a contribution of some $25,000 to Rotary's legendary 40-year fight against polio, which is very close to being concluded. So our hope, wish, and request from the city of Rancho Mirage is that you consider taking on the event sponsor because of the fact that it's being held in your fine city at a level of $25,000. That's a robust request for Rotary, and obviously, if the appetite is for something less than that, we'd be very happy, to be honest with you. So I'll be happy to review this proposal with whomever is appropriate in the city. We've been through this before on other occasions, and I look forward to further discussion. So many thanks for your consideration.
Thanks for your comments. If you'll make sure the city clerk has a copy of your letter.
That was the last speaker. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Okay, that concludes the...
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Please come on up and state your name.
Sorry, good afternoon, honorable mayor, council members, councilman staff. My name is Javier Enriquez. I'm a senior public affairs specialist for South Coast Air Quality Management District. I'd like to share the following announcement on behalf of South Coast AQMD. South Coast AQMD is excited to share that more than $417 million is now available through Invest Clean Program, which provides four major funding opportunities. First, the charging infrastructure program helps offset the cost of installing DC fast chargers for Class 4 through 8 vehicles. Eligible applicants include charging station developers, fleet operators, truck stops, and distribution centers. Second, the truck replacement program is a scrap and replace program to transition Class 8 diesel goods movement trucks, such as heavy haulers, box trucks, dump trucks, and refuse trucks into battery electric alternatives. Third, the battery electric cargo handling equipment program provides funding to replace diesel yard trucks or top handlers with battery electric models. Fleet owners and warehouses and freight facilities are encouraged to apply. And finally, the battery electric switcher locomotive program supports replacing diesel-fueled switcher locomotives with battery electric versions. Charging infrastructure for these locomotives is also eligible for funding. Applications may be submitted online by 12:00 PM on November 28, 2025. For full details and instructions on how to apply, please visit Invest Clean webpage at AQMD.gov/InvestClean. I will be providing this information and link to the clerk and supply any priors it need be. Again, thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you for coming today.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, that was the last speaker.
Okay, that does conclude our non-agenda public comments. We will be shortly going into recess into closed session, and I will ask our county council to review the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, for the promotion to county council. That's no comment. We will be convening in a closed session for the item before you on the agenda listed as 7A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Potential Initiation of Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D4 with one potential case.
We are now in recess. We are now back in session. I will ask the city attorney to review the items that were covered during the recess.
Thank you, Mayor. At recess, the council voted on a 5-0 vote, motioned by councilmember Molado and seconded by councilmember Downs, approving moving forward with a receivership for that parcel having assessors parcel number 674151007. No other reportable action taken.
That concludes the meeting, and this meeting is now adjourned.